I broke the camp. Oh, wow. And it's not very good.
Like to call the meeting to order. City of Twin Oaks Board of Alderman Meeting, September the third, two thousand and twenty-five. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is denied by the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and equal liberty and justice.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Eisenhower?
Here.
Alderman Krusen?
Here.
Alderman Stokel?
Here.
Alderman Crawford?
Present.
Mayor Fortune?
Here.
I have an agenda that was posted for tonight's meeting. If there are no changes or amendments, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Any citizen comments at this point in time? Anything online?
Nope.
Okay. We have a consent agenda. Board of Alderman, regular meeting minutes for August the twentieth. And a bills list, August sixteenth to August twenty-ninth.
Could I, could I ask just a couple of questions?
Yes.
About the bills list? So, um, there's a charge for an occupancy permit from the county, is that? What is that for?
That is the fee that we pay for them to do our occupancy inspections for us.
Change attempts.
Right. So when the apartments change, we have their occupancy inspectors come over and inspect.
Do we then?
Yes, then the apartments bill, pay for it.
Great.
After that.
Yep.
We're reimbursed.
And then there's one that says certificate of participation for seventy-one thousand dollars.
That is the note on this building.
Why is it called certificate?
The cops is what they call them, a cop. And it's a, it's a different way of, of doing a financing where the banks or others who are going to invest are issued certificates of participation. And that's how they do the finance. It's all because cities are treated differently than any other, you know, a private institution. And so we have to be very careful about how we go about borrowing money.
Understood. Thank you. And then there's this invoice from Engelmeier, which is the firm that I guess we get our prosecutor from. So they like charges thirty dollars a day for like forty consecutive days. It's like, what do, what do they do for ten minutes a day? I mean, I assume we only have one matter before them? Is that true? Or do, or are they working on multiple matters?
We could have multiple matters. I'm not exactly sure what all.
Does anybody know how many there are?
Yeah. I mean, there could be traffic tickets. There could be, you know, all sorts of things that we may not be aware of that go through the municipal court.
Did they give you any more detail than what I saw?
They do, they do give us an invoice, but it's not very detailed. It's just kind of the monthly, you know.
Okay. I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Report of committees, please report.
All right. For the month of August, we have twenty-three radio calls, hundred-and-twenty-nine self-initiated generated five reports, eleven traffic stops. We had one summons for peace disturbance, four auto accidents. They've been in our next station and then on the parking lots. And we have one crime of peace disturbance. And on the bike, I logged sixteen point two hours. Questions?
Thank you. Okay, no old business, new business. We have resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen. Would you read that?
Sure. Resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen, a resolution of the Twin Oaks Board of Alderman approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Game World Event Services LLC.
It's Family Fun Day.
Yeah, it's the contractor that provides all the games and Eurobungee and what else? So we have in Paula, a bunch of things that Family Fun Day.
Yeah, a new, a new ride that goes around in circles that four participants can go in and, you know, make each other sick.
Get dizzy, get sick, and then throw up.
Right.
Yes. We had a new fast pitch game that we were putting up.
Yeah.
And then, of course, the Eurobungee was requested to be able to do again. And then we have a number of different bounce houses for kids.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Something for all ages. So yeah, there's the list if anybody's interested.
Okay. Your motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen. Bill number twenty-five dash oh-nine.
An ordinance re-adopting and re-establishing and making public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial personal interest of certain municipal officials.
Is this because of a change in the state owner?
This one is because the, every city that adopts their own method of dealing with conflicts of interest is supposed to make it known to the public and re-adopt it every other year. So the Missouri Ethics Commission likes for us to do it every year because then they say you won't forget. But that's why we do it. So no changes here. We're just re-adopting what we have on the books and have had on the books for several, well, two thousand and one. So.
That doesn't, that doesn't excuse you from registering with the Ethics Commission every year then?
No.
We even attached the farm again, so everybody can see it again. Although you can do it online. I wouldn't recommend.
Yeah.
Handwrite it.
Let's read it again, please.
An ordinance re-adopting and re-establishing and making public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial personal interest of certain municipal officials.
I move we adopt twenty-two-five dash oh-nine.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Eisenhower?
Yes.
Alderman Krusen?
Yes.
Alderman Stokel?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes. Bill number twenty-five dash oh-nine will become ordinance twenty-five dash oh-nine by unanimous vote. Bill number twenty-five dash ten, please.
An ordinance amending chapter two-twenty pertaining to park regulations. So hopefully you guys all had time to look over this. This is the discussions that the park committee has been having for their last two meetings about changes that we're going to make to the reservation policy. Starting in with the two thousand and twenty-six reservation season, since we're almost to the end of our normal reservation time.
And the changes that were included are what's in red?
Correct. Yeah. So there's a, I think there's a clean copy and then all this stuff that's struck through. So basically, if you want me to give kind of a nutshell, it's removing the alcohol, the prohibition of alcohol. We really don't enforce that in any way. It's also removing, changing our current procedures from the way we've been doing it is deposits and refunds, which are difficult to manage. A lot of people don't like it because we hold their money and then they have to wait for a check back. So we're going to a flat fee for service. So there will be a fee for residents and a fee for non-residents. They'll be different, obviously. Twenty-five dollars for residents, one hundred dollars for non-residents. The reason for that is so that we capture their credit card information. So you will have to have a credit card to make a reservation because we are moving to a more online reservation system to free up, I would say probably at least fifty percent of Paula's time is spent on reservations, which is a lot. It's a significant amount of time. So that allows us also to have credit card information if there are any damages in the park or excessive cleanup fees that are needed, then we can charge the offending party. So that is kind of the crux of the.
And it's a non-refundable fee.
Correct.
Yep.
So in here, it talks about, it specifically calls out no unloading on the basketball court.
Correct.
And I know it says all parking is on the road, but the last two events I've seen in the park, there's been a dozen, half a dozen or more cars parked down on the basketball court.
Yep. Yep. And we have, we, we're going to talk about how to address, we have another issue that happens.
We have another.
Weekend. And so we'll talk about that in my city clerk report. But yes.
Okay. But I'm just wondering, do we need to specifically spell out no parking on that?
Well, if you want to see how the, um, let's see, I think I put the reservation, the new park reservation application, so you can see.
Yeah.
It is underlined, it's in red, there is no unloading near the pavilion, there is no parking. So, I mean, putting it in the code, they don't read this. So putting it in the code is not going to help.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay. So, okay.
This is what they get and see. Yeah, exactly. So this is what the new proposed will look like.
The, the park committee's done a lot of work on this, and I think they've done a great job. I don't, I don't disagree with virtually anything in it. I, you can charge non-residents as much as you want. I don't care. We can put stipulations in there to charge however much you want if there's damages or trouble. But I do have an issue with charging residents a fee. It's one of the few visible benefits that we offer to residents. And given our financial situation, I, I just don't think it's justified. And I think the biggest reason you want to do it is so you can get their credit card number, right? Which I think you can get their credit card number anyway.
No, we can't. Because we have to cap, we have to charge it to capture it in the system. And we do not have a secure way of storing numbers without capturing it in the system.
Right. But what he's saying is you're giving an address of a resident, which means if you want to bring charges against them for damages, you could easily do that. I think that's what I.
They just need to understand that, that we're going to come back to them and ask for compensation if they, if they cause trouble. And, and maybe, and you can borrow them from using it again. I just, I have a, an issue with the tax increase when you don't have any.
Reason for a tax.
Well, it also, you have to remember too, that it also helps people stay responsible with their reservations. So if they've got money on it, they're gonna, not, people will call and reserve four or five weekends if they want to. They don't have to pay anything. Why wouldn't they do that? So that eliminates that problem as well. I don't think there are any cities around us that we have seen in our research that do it for free. None of them. So every place, the residents have to pay some smaller amount. It's always significantly less than what the non-residents have to pay, but no one gives it for free. And I see your point, but we have.
People don't give their trash for free either.
That's true.
We can't really compare. And I, I agree with what you're saying. I also think that it, it is difficult on us for the take and give back. And I just don't, I've always found it interesting. Like, I've left three hundred dollars here for a summer because of the way my reservations hit, right? A hundred dollars on each one. And it had to be separate, and they all had to be cashed. And I couldn't get them back till I'd had the reservation, you know, like, so if I'm willing to do that, I will also take up every Saturday if I want to for twenty-five bucks, right? Like, so that's, I don't, I don't think those are the deterrents that we think that they would be. I like having something on the line, but I also like getting it back. I realize that it's a hassle, but I also think that it is a perk. It's the same kind of perk that we give to our residents in doing free trash and recycling. We do things here because we have a very large tax base without a whole lot of use of that tax dollar. And we know that because we can put in things like sidewalks at an expensive amount and other improvements that we get to do. Put on a fireworks show for twenty-plus thousand dollars. We don't need the extra twenty-five bucks for a person. So it's just a, a thought on that that, you know, I'm not entirely, I also don't like the idea of no unloading zone. Like, I don't understand why, why someone driving up there, putting their stuff there and driving off is a problem. If a car can come down there, which it can, because there's handicap parking there, then why can't I come down and unload my stuff?
You want to speak to that, Weiner?
So I, I understand what you're saying. However, the reality of it is people don't just drive down, unload. They drive down, leave it there. And then when I come down, they're like, oh, I was just here for a minute. No, you've been here for ten minutes. I've been watching you.
Right.
And that is the only walking access into the park.
Mm-hmm.
And people do not obey the yield of pedestrians.
I agree with that.
So I've seen many strollers try to get off on the side.
Right.
And it's, it's more about limiting, yes, handicap, handicapped to go down there without a problem. And just Monday, we had four handicap vehicles down there. Yeah. They were off properly, or placard, and which wasn't a problem. So I just told them, you know, line up next to the spots.
Right.
But if we bring down more cars, that's more vehicles coming down, more chances for pedestrians to come along the side or in the, I have witnessed it. People washing their phone going, oh, GPS is taking me down here. Okay. And not looking up. So it's, it's mainly a deterrent to limit the amount of traffic going down there.
Yeah, I'm guessing almost everybody that's having a party down there gets grandma's car so that they can have a placard.
I mean, as a thing, I'll just steal a placard. Like, I'll use my, my mother to ban so I can have placards. But it, I, I guess that I just think, and I can understand because I don't use it that often. And just because I'm respectful doesn't mean everyone is respectful. And I can hear that. But I'll skirt the law to do it. So, you know, like, I can get around it. I just find that that is a very long walk if what you're carrying is enough stuff for a cool day's worth of a, you know, party.
And Paula does mention to them at the time of reservation that they should have a wagon or a hand truck or something so that they can have some assistance with.
There is, there is another, another thing to consider too. What's more dangerous? Somebody trying to wheel down that steep road? A wagon full of whatever, or somebody parking down there? You know?
And I guess that like, I've seen, you know, loading and unloading and make it a time limit. And then if the car passed that time limit, we start ticketing people. Like, just do it. Just give them a ticket. Just tell them that they can't do it.
The difficulty is, is that we're not there. The events are on the weekends and the evenings, and no one is there to monitor it. So like you said, you've seen the dozen cars parked on the basketball court all weekend. It, and I will say, the thing that I have noticed since I started working here is that it is very different than the, the use of the park for reservations is very different than I thought. It is very different in the last, like, I don't know, four or five years. It has exploded. The demand has exploded. There are reservations every single Saturday and Sunday for the entirety of the reservation season. Lot of Fridays. I mean, it has exploded. So the more people that we allow to use that, and the word gets out that we're allowing unloading now, we're gonna have, it'll, it'll get out of control very, very fast. That is my.
Right. But we always, I mean, I can tell you that I wasn't breaking the law when I unloaded before. It was a part of the thing. Literally, like, if you show them the thing, you can load and unload. That was a part of it.
That was a long time ago. It's been in the code that there's no unloading down there for, at least since.
In the, in the.
Since, yeah.
The date of code change? I don't remember that.
Many years ago.
So we, we also have people using that pavilion that have not made a reservation, that haven't seen the rules.
Yeah. Yeah. Who are going to drive down.
Yeah, who are going to drive down.
Is it the church a better option?
The church is very limited on when they let people in there. They are, when, during school, they are very vigilant, and they will not let people get back there.
On Saturday?
Even some Saturdays when they have events and stuff, they won't let people back there. And Sunday, for sure, during church, they won't let people back there.
Yeah. And it's actually probably harder to get in and out that way if you're carrying a bunch of stuff because you're doing steps. So you don't have the ability to roll something.
Yeah.
Right.
Do we have frequent instances where a resident tries to reserve the pavilion, but it's booked by a non-resident? Does it happen a lot?
Some, yeah. Not a lot. Not a ton.
But it was for, a request for this coming.
For this coming weekend.
Oh, yeah. And.
Yeah.
I don't have anything available.
Right.
During November.
November. Yeah.
But we currently, do we currently charge non-residents at all?
We do. Fifty dollars. And then they have to put a deposit down that we then refund. But the deposits don't near cover anything if, if we have damages. It's a hundred dollars. It doesn't even cover Jake's time for extra cleaning. If needed. So, and we are going to go to a more online system with the new website. So where people will be able to reserve online instead of having to call and, you know, take up, like I said, a majority of Paula's time sometimes to field the questions and stuff. So it will be more difficult to, I, I don't know what the system's going to look like. You know, we have, we would have the issue too. If we, if it's free for residents, people could make reservations for other people, not realizing that if something happens, you know, they're, that they're, they're ultimately responsible for what happens in that. So that is the difficulty, that we don't have any verification that it's actually a resident booking, you know? So yes, we can track them by address, but we don't know who's actually using it. So a lot of this, I, I will say, I know, I know that you say we can't compare to other cities, but we did take a lot of these suggestions when the park committee was considering it from other cities around here and how they handle their reservations. Because they obviously have bigger parks, more pavilions to deal with. They've been through all this a lot more than we have. And we took from that experience that they have put together on their, you know, rental requirements for us to learn from. So.
We have had people drive their cars to the pavilion.
We have, yes.
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 Yeah.
Yeah, as recently as this weekend.
Really?
Yeah. And then, and then broke the gate to do it. So.
Really?
Yeah. So we are, it, like I said, it has exploded in popularity. So we're having a lot more issues than we ever did before. It's very different. A lot of people are, you know, they're, we are running into a lot more entitled people that if Weiner asks them to move their car, they don't just do it. They have an attitude about it. So we're just running into that a lot more. So we're trying to sort of get ahead of that as much as possible.
The, I, I don't necessarily have any heartburn over the twenty-five dollars fee. I mean, if this, if we were talking a hundred dollars for residents and two hundred for non-residents, might be a different discussion. But twenty-five dollars, that doesn't really bother me too much. But I, uh, I'm not a big fan of, of allowing additional cars down that road. It's tight. We're talking about expanding the parking on, on Bell Drive. Is that it?
Well, I don't know if we're expanding the parking.
Well, I'm not the parking. I'm talking, not necessarily.
The access.
Yeah.
The sidewalk.
And the sidewalk. Yeah.
Making the access safer.
Better. Yes. The addition of the sidewalk.
But still, that is a long drive, and there is nowhere to go.
Yeah. Pedestrian has to step off. There's, there's no other alternative.
And there's nowhere to step off.
Yeah.
So that's, that's me. The other, the other thing I was thinking about the other day was, do we have anything in the ordinance about offensive music or behavior?
We have something about if the police have to be called. There is something about that. I do not think we have a specific about music.
They can't hire their own bands.
No, I'm talking about, you know, loud music with a lot of language.
Yeah.
There's kids in that park.
The only thing we say is that if the police have to be called because of group misbehavior, the entire park deposit will be forfeited. Obviously, we're taking that out. We just said the, the future reservations for that group may be denied. That's the only language we have in there right now.
And if we're going on, how would that happen? How would we actually deny them in the future?
They could just call up with a different name. We wouldn't be able to.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Yeah. That's true. We don't really have a way to do that.
We would not. If they tried to make a reservation under the same name, we could obviously flag it in the system that we're going to have to take reservations, that there was an issue with this reservation. But again, they could call with a different name, and we wouldn't know. And part of the issue with parking too is that, you know, we purpose, it, it is, it helps limit the size of the parties that are held down there because we only have thirty parking spaces. And we only like for there to be less than fifty people. That has been a regulation for a long, long time. And so, you know, again, allowing more unloading and more people parking down on the basketball court just means crowds that, and we already have people that certainly push and break that often. So, because again, it's always on the weekends. We don't have staff necessarily here weekend evenings to be able to tell people or ticket people.
So unloading on the basketball court would actually encourage larger groups?
Yeah. And who's to say they don't have six cars that need to be unloaded on the basketball court?
Is that?
Yeah.
Tim, did you have any, uh, everybody's kind of giving their input?
No, I, I think, you know, it's a, it's a pretty much a landlocked, no place for improvements towards those things to, to, to help people. I think they they'll plan for it the way it is now. And, uh, and, and I think it'd be safer for the walkers, for people walking down. So, yeah, I think it's fine. Plan for it the way it is now, and, uh, and, and I think it'd be safer for the walkers, for people walking down, so, yeah, uh, I think it's fine.
Okay, any more discussion? Want to read it a second time?
Sure. An ordinance amending chapter two twenty pertaining to park regulations.
Is there a motion to approve bill twenty-five dash ten?
Motion to approve bill twenty-five dash ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll.
Okay, uh, Alderman Eisenhower, sorry.
Uh, yes.
Alderman Carson?
Yes.
Alderman Stokel?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
No.
Okay. Bill number twenty-five dash ten is approved by a vote of three yes and one no. Bill number twenty-five dash eleven.
An ordinance amending chapter one twenty pertaining to access to public meeting and records.
Okay, main achievements that I was going for with these amendments is, one, to comply with the recent statutory amendments. Having to do with closing records of minors and certain rental agreements, uh, such as park rental agreements. Um, and adding clarifications and payment deadlines that have been added to the state law, so that. If people don't respond after X amount of time to a request for clarification or for a payment, that it can be considered withdrawn, so they don't hang around forever. Then I rewrote some of the sections to be a little bit more, and I put a little bit more in quotes. Uh, user-friendly, like, using boards and commissions instead of public governmental body, which maybe nobody knows what that is, but they probably know what the boards and commissions are. Um, I added the video attendance policy that you have, that you adopted in around COVID time, and. But it was just out there as a separate written policy, and it wasn't actually in the code, so, I, it needs to be in there with that, I think. And then there were just a few other cleanups, and, um, I'll be happy to answer any other questions you want to have about it.
Any other questions for Paul? Read it a second time, please.
Bill number twenty-five dash eleven, an ordinance amending chapter one twenty pertaining to access to public meetings and records. Ready to vote? Alderman Eisenhower?
Yes.
Alderman Carson?
Yes.
Alderman Stokel?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Oh, sorry.
I wondered if we had done that, I'm not paying attention.
My bad, I forgot last time, somebody say they can make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll look at it.
Okay, we'll call roll again, please.
Okay, Alderman Eisenhower?
Still yes.
Alderman Carson?
Yes.
Alderman Stokel?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay, bill number twenty-five dash eleven becomes ordinance twenty-five dash eleven by unanimous vote. No discussion items, attorney's report.
Been working on a few of these things that we talked about here tonight, but other than that, um, it's been relatively quiet. I kind of, I got started on the ordinance for the tax levy, that'll be on the next agenda, and the only thing I don't have that April's gonna give me is the actual rate, and.
Mid-September, we're told, so I don't, we may need to.
Have that special meeting.
Yeah, we may need to have a special meeting if we don't get them before the, because we have to have seven-day notice, so we're, I don't know, they said the third week in September, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of iffy, if we're gonna get it in time.
But that's all.
Okay, city clerk report.
Okay, um, so as you know, code enforcement courtesy notices started going out, um, August twenty-second. Um, we have a couple more city sessions scheduled, so the next meeting, we'll have one on fentanyl safety, and, um, Weiner has a guest speaker lined up for that. Uh, October first, we're gonna have home and property safety, which Officer Weiner's gonna do that one, and then we're gonna have, um, fraud prevention on October fifteenth.
Tell all your friends, invite all your friends, Jason.
To come, yeah. It's only twenty minutes, okay, um, and then we did, um, panic security alarm testing, which apparently it had never been tested since the beginning of this building, so we had them test the.
I tested it once.
Yeah, never formally tested, so we had all the buttons that we have here tested, and they all, I'm happy to say, work great, so that was good, and, um. As far as project updates, um, I'm still waiting on, yeah, I think there's one over here. AT&T details for the Crescent Avenue sidewalk project, so they're done, they say, but we're waiting on AT&T to give us documentation on some removals, so hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have a. Final payment on that, um, the boli entrance is done, the park lighting, I'm still awaiting, awaiting boss lighting to tell us what's going on with the, um, discrepancies we're having in the scheduling. And then, um, I did get, um, that semi-formal announcement about the Merrimack Station grant, but it'll be a while before we get anything formal, formal in writing on that. And then the issue that we alluded to earlier, when we were talking about the park, was that we had an issue this weekend, where there was, it was not a rental, it was just a large group. Utilizing the park on Sunday night, and they did, um, we don't have video evidence that it was them that broke the gate, but. The gate was broken, and, um, we do have video of them driving two cars all the way down past the pavilion, in fact. To unload their, um, or load up their vehicles at like eight-thirty at night, so, and, and Jake knows that the gate was locked whenever he left, so. That is an issue we're having, so we are looking at some options for, um, potentially replacement of that gate or some other situation there, because we think the gate kind of just invites people to try to. Open it, jimmy it, break the lock, if they want to, they will, so, we're looking to maybe, maybe do some security, removable security ballards or something like that instead of the gate. So that's something that we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that when we get into budget for next year, so that may be a project that Jake would like to bring up, um. As part of maybe a bigger park project that he has in mind, you know, to kind of rejuvenate that, maybe.
Did they break the lock or the gate itself?
They broke the gate itself, like the weld that holds on the rod that locks the gate, so.
Did that show up on the security cameras at all?
It did, but we're having internet issues with the cameras, so we do have, we do have the cars driving down and the cars leaving, and we had all, we could see all of them, and we could see what area of the park. They were utilizing, and it wasn't in the pavilion, because the pavilion was empty, that camera did work, so it was a, a. Group that was using the picnic area there to the left side of the lake, so. But anyway, so that is just some of the issues that we're talking about and trying to figure out a better, um, you know, we're gonna. Maybe change some of the signage up at the top of the hill to be, I don't know, if you've been there lately, it's pretty old and kind of looking peeling paint, and. So that it's more clear that the only access down is for handicap parking, and it's not a turnaround spot, it's not an unloading zone, so.
We have a, we have a stop sign there, so which kind of gives you an indicator that it's a road.
That you could drive on it, yeah.
So maybe removing a stop sign?
Yeah, that's probably gonna.
Yeah, I mean, here's the thing, I, I mean, not, not that we shouldn't get all of the options, but. Somebody who's gonna break a gate is not paying attention to any of your signs. They're not doing this because we aren't doing enough things, like, it, it's because they are willing to break the law at a pretty good clip. Right, like, I mean, to take two cars down that road, there's, there's zero question that once you pass that gate, you don't belong in there, there's no question. There's not any person who thinks, oh, I've been seeing a lot of cars driving around here.
And it's only one way out.
You know, like, are you kidding me?
Once you're in there, you're in.
That's, that's not a signage problem.
Well, we've had, we have had some issues too where people have genuinely been lost and have driven all the way down. Like, you know, we, since Jake has been here, I think we said, well, there's been five instances in, in five months. Of people driving to the pavilion, past the pavilion even, like, some lady got all the way back to the autumn leaf gate in her car.
Have these incidents happened since the state legalized marijuana?
Oh my god.
No.
That's not a smart.
Did my sister drive down that road?
Was the gate open before that? Like, on the.
The one with the, with the older lady, the gate was open at that time.
Okay, because I can see that, right? I can see that, well, I can, I can see that, I mean, sadly, but I can't. But if you went around a gate, or like, I know we've had in the past people who people.
Drive through.
Yeah. The mask, I mean, if you did all of those things, there's not a sign stopping you.
Yeah.
Right, like, you can't fix stupid at some point, I feel like having better security so that we do have the ability to prosecute those sorts of offenders. I mean, can we not have something that's right at that gate that's pointed at a, at a height? I'm taking a picture of your license plate, FYI.
Yeah.
When we get better wifi in the park, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the thing, like, whatever that takes, to me, we have the ability to at least stop the people who have done it before.
Think we can do that now, we should have electric.
Yeah, but the wifi is the problem right now, until we, until next year, when we do phase two and they get the better wifi receivers, I am in talks with Verizon to get something that I hope will be better in the interim. But I don't know that it's gonna make enough difference, until we get the ones that are way up high on the pole, we have to have a way up high on the pole one.
Right, because we're down, and I get that, but like, to me, those are the places, not that the other things can't be done, I just don't think that that's where. I don't think your, your change is gonna happen that way, right, like, I know what the sign says, I see this, I, I like the stop sign being there, because. Even when I have gone in there before, right, authorized, um. I stop before I start down that road, I would hate the idea that someone thought that, I like, didn't read the other signs, because we're paying attention to the road, and we just start driving down this road that has people on it. Right, like, I like the idea that you at least had to stop and think before you took the next step. So, I mean, that's the part of like, and it could say, stop, and right below it, you know, have a sign that says, authorized entrance only.
It does say that, that's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it says that.
Well, then there's no helping these people, that's what I would say, then there's no helping.
We can't fix stupid?
Exactly, I mean.
If you broke the gate to get in, you're trespassing, aren't you?
Well, to break the wall, they probably broke it with the car.
It's possible.
Yeah, we don't know exactly how it got broken.
Or they thought it was one that would open, I mean, there's a bazillion different ways, but like, to me, I would like to have security that is up there, it's basically saying, you are on candid camera. If you wanna break the law, go for it, we are going to prosecute you, and then do it. Like, to me, that's the way to stop things from that, like that from happening, is that you actually start prosecuting people who do it.
That's all I have.
April, um, I, since our last meeting, I've probably had twenty-plus people ask me about the pump.
It is on order, we are waiting for it to come, we had to get a replacement pump.
I, I know, it might not be a bad idea to post something that says, we're working on it.
Yeah.
Help is on the way.
On the website, would they go to the website?
I, I don't know where.
A count, a countdown?
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's be cool.
Countdown.
Yeah, right, no.
How many days we have till all your lives?
Well, every person that you ask, or gets asked, to any of you say, it has been ordered.
Yeah, I told them all that.
Pumps are difficult to manage, to maintain, very expensive, it is on the way. April's going on vacation again, no.
And I will just add to the pump conversation that we are going to continue to have this problem, until we get. The stuff cleaned up that's coming into that lake.
Do we need engineers? Do we know what to do?
The stream, the stream that we put up there is, has not been effective, has not been doing scrubbing that we thought that it should do. I think it's, it's probably the design, it's not deep enough, it's not holding enough water to, to let it settle, uh.
That was the engineered solution many years ago.
Yeah, yeah, so, I seriously think when we're looking at next year, we need to pay a little bit of attention to that, because otherwise, we're gonna be putting two pumps in every year. And that's all I have to say about that.
Yep, that's all I had, yep.
All right, Alderman comments, Tim?
Uh, no, sir.
Lisa?
Um, no, the only comment is just to what you just said, and it feels like it's such a long stretch that we should be able to do something to catch some of the silt out.
We should. Yep.
So.
Well, part of it is that pump up there's not working either, I don't think.
That has never worked well, so we, I did talk to Jake about, you know, maybe, I, I think. The design of that with the pond up there was not the best idea, and it should have just been more of a natural stream with rocks all the way down to then catch some of that sediment as it goes down. Instead of trying to pond it and then hold, you know, it just, it, it makes more of a mess up there than, than that eventually comes down, so.
The first, the first dam, as, as it comes out of that MODOT pipe. That collects the water is not deep enough.
Right, yeah.
And therefore.
Yeah, it just.
It burns the pump out.
Yeah.
So it needs to be, yeah, we, we need to have.
I think, I agree with you that we need to figure out a solution, because not only will we burn out every other pump, that is. A problem that is on an annual basis, what we will have again is a dredging of the lake.
Exactly.
So, we have to look at this long-term and figure out a solution, we tried, it failed, try again, in my mind. Like, we have to keep coming up with ideas until we get one that works, because it seemed really reasonable that that would work, right?
Yeah.
That like, you slow it, and then you let it, and then you slow it, I mean, even when I look at my own property, I think that would work. It didn't.
The intake point.
Right, it didn't, because of the flow of how it, what goes through, so.
It overheats and burns, and burns up and buries.
There is, there is also, there's also an engineering fix, I don't know if it would work in our lake, but. There's a, a silt, they call it a silt dam.
Yeah.
Where, as that water's coming out, you know, we're recirculating that water through that waterfall, as it's coming out of that waterfall, it's scrubbing it again.
Yeah.
And that's something that we potentially should look at.
My guess is we'll need several solutions, because of the amount of silt that we're trying to, that, that eventually is gonna have to make its way somewhere.
Right.
So, I think that it is worth looking at the long-term solution and figuring that out, because I think it will take several years of concerted effort and trying things that, you know, work. Along the path, and then also, I, I agree, like, you have to do something to protect the actual machinery itself in a way that we haven't, but there's too much still to do that right now. Like, what we have down there is just too much.
Those lakes, as they were originally designed, are doing exactly what they were supposed to do.
Absolutely.
They were detention ponds.
That's what they are, yeah.
To filter all that stuff out before we pass it on, and it's doing that.
It's doing exactly that.
Then we came along and beautified our park and said, we wanna make really nice lakes out of this.
And we did not.
And that became a problem.
Right, so, I just am saying, I agree, we need to start looking at solutions for that, or we're gonna be dredging that lake again in the next five to seven years.
It's probably not that far off, unfortunately.
I would bet you're in five to seven years here.
Yeah. Anything else? Joe?
Not mine.
I, I don't have any other comments, except, uh, I won't be able to make the next meeting, so, I don't know if that's a problem for anybody else.
What date is that one?
The fifteen, seventeen, I think, I'm in October, yeah, seventeen.
Is it okay for everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Your final citizen comments. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.